Christmas breakfast Thursday.
I told you I'd have to shoot you. It's a rule.
Especially not me.
Tim.
It'd be fine if we leave him tomorrow.
No.
You know Larry? And he's good.
No, Larry's not going to call. He's saying he's trying to make it up.
You're not going tomorrow? Looking like probably not. Well, he didn't leave him to do?
I've got my Christmas breakfast Thursday.
Sam Rooster.
Hmm?
Seen somebody.
Somebody.
Give me a beer.
We.
I'm just making a comment. Just chill out, I know.
Mr. Chapman, I'm gonna do you like you do me. Look, look, Mr. Chapman. Mr. Chairman, Chairman Chapman.
I know.
I'm teasing.
Come to order, please. Can you hear me out there? We're having a little issue this day. Okay, good. I welcome everybody to this, uh, public hearing to consider amending ordinance twenty seventeen dash oh five, known as the Beach Activities Ordinance and Associated Fee Resolution. So that's the purpose of this meeting. We're gonna have approximately one hour to handle this ma- uh, hearing due to the fact we have a four o'clock Regent Board meeting. So, um... Ms. Sid.
Yes, sir. Uh, for the members of the public and for the commissioners, we're gonna handle, um, all sections of the Beach Activities Ordinance and the Associated Fee and Fine Resolution that relate to beach vendors first. Um, and with that, I think Commissioner Jones has an announcement.
I do. I'm gonna recuse myself from the vote, as I always do, on the beach vending because my son Jimbo has, uh, a beach chair company.
Okay. Um, and she'll file the appropriate form with the clerk. Uh, with that preliminary matter out of the way, um, if the board would like, I can very quickly run through the changes that are being proposed that relate to beach vendors. All of the changes in the Beach Activities Ordinance that relate to beach vendors, um, can be found either in the definition section. There's a one definition for vending, which we have a minor change proposed, and that's on page five of the ordinance. And then all other sections relating to beach vendors are in section sixty of the ordinance, and those changes begin on page seventeen. Just real quickly flip to it. I'd like to point out, um, there's a minor change on page seventeen. A sentence is being removed, um, regarding food and beverage vending operations on the beach. I would like to clarify this matter for the board and for members of the public. Last year, we made a change to the Beach Activities Ordinance, and this language was inadvertently left in the ordinance. Um, we are making no changes whatsoever to how food and beverage, uh, vending is handled on the beach. If you flip in your ordinance to section D twelve on page twenty, you can see, um, again in that section in, uh, paragraph twelve, uh, "At neighborhood and regional beach accesses and public beaches, there is absolutely no vending of food or beverage on the beach." Um, however, last year, we did make a change that allowed, uh, private property owners to vend, um, specifically resort areas to vend food and beverage. So the deletion of that sentence on page seventeen is really just to clarify a change that the board had already made last year. Uh, continuing on, the next change can be found on page eighteen. This is section B one, and this has to do with, um, uh, vendor, delivery vendors and whether or not they need to remove their items at night or keep them in a storage box. Currently, uh, beach vendors are allowed to leave their items, uh, delivery vendors are allowed to leave their items remaining on public beach accesses at the toe of the dune. There was a change that was considered by the TDC Beach Management Committee, um, to require delivery beach vendors to place their items in a storage box at the toe of the dune or to remove the items at the end of the night. I would like to clarify, um, whenever this draft got promulgated, it was, uh, based on a misunderstanding that that, uh, provision passed the Beach Management Committee. That's actually not too true. It was a two-to-two vote. So this change is not something that made it through the Beach Management Committee. However, it was included in the draft, and I'm including it here for clarity's sake. But I did wanna make it clear for the record that this change of having the vendors store their items in the, uh, box or moving it from the beach is not something that passed the Beach Management Committee. Next, you'll see a change on page eighteen that has to do, uh, it's just clarifying language, making sure that we have clear corridors to lifeguard towers. On page nineteen, the next, uh, substantive change would be in paragraph D eight. This is a change that was included by my office, and this is really just to address, um, issues that have come up over the last several years. It's something that's come up, um, every summer. Uh, this is a change to section DH, uh, DH which authorizes, um, or clarifies who has the ability to control vending on the public beaches seaward of their property. And then finally, the last change is at the bottom of page nineteen, and this just would make it a violation of the ordinance for anyone to move or manipulate the device that's used to delineate the vendor zones. So those are all the changes in section twenty-two dash sixty. There's also amendments being proposed to the fee resolution, which if you will flip to the fee resolution. On page two, you can see at the very bottom of the page, there is a, a vendor fee for miscellaneous operations. It was proposed that this fee be reduced. This is for the type of vendors, um, photographers, wedding caterers, um, florists, things like of that, that nature. Vendors that usually don't bring a lot of equipment to the beach every single day. And I guess in exchange or in recognition of the fact that they don't have as much beach equipment, the idea is they should probably, uh, there'd be some consideration for a reduced And those are all the changes that relate to the beach vendors. Does the board have any questions as it relates to beach vendors?
Sid, uh, question on number ten.
Uh-huh.
Bottom of page nineteen. It says it's unlawful and a violation of the ordinance for anybody to move or manipulate the devices used to designate these vendor zones. Um, what's the penalty for it?
So it would be, uh, under our Fee and Fine Resolution, it would be, let's see, if you look at the very first block, it would be a violation of chapter twenty-two or twenty-three that's not otherwise listed. So one hundred dollars for a first offense, two hundred, uh, for a second, and then five hundred dollars for any subsequent offense.
All right. I think I've had this discussion several times over the last few years concerning these, uh, fines that's associated with the violations. And I, when you have the same reoccurring vendor that keeps doing this and they just get hit with one, two, or three hundred dollar fine, five hundred dollar fine, I don't know that we're getting their attention. So, um, it might be more appropriate that we, to get compliance, that we start looking at increasing the fine schedule concerning, uh, these violations. Otherwise, it's just a part of the price of doing business, and they factor it in in their operation and don't concern themselves with it. There might be another time that we might wanna look at too, and I'm just proffering this for the board, that we may add in there, if you've got that third one in the same season, then you also have to, uh, come to the county administrator to determine if you're even gonna get a permit for the rest of the year or even into the subsequent year. Until we can get as much compliance as we possibly can, we've, this is the only mechanism we have for compliance. And to me, it seems like it's a little light. Y'all know my past, my background. Uh, first one is a warning normally for me if I catch you doing something, but the second time, there is no warning. It becomes punitive, and you're gonna be charged significantly for what it is. So I'd like for the board to consider that if we're gonna really try to get compliance for those vendors, and it's not all of them, there's just a handful of them, and I'm sure Code knows who they are, that it might be time that we start addressing it more forcefully. That's my comments. Ms. Commander, you got anything?
I have, can't agree with you, yes, sir.
I agree. Commissioner Chapman, um, so you could, uh, the board could decide to raise the, uh, fines for, uh, vending violations. Um, if the board choose to do that, uh, of course, we're capped at five hundred dollars per occurrence.
But there's nothing, okay, there's a five hundred dollar cap on the third one, that's statutory, I understand that. But is there anything that would prohibit, in addition to the five hundred, that you've got to go and have a hearing before the administrator to determine if you can maintain that license?
No, sir. Um, we would probably have to flush out that language a little bit if we wanted to go with a hearing. Um, you know, some other options would be, uh, if you are convicted of a violation, um, then we wouldn't have to have the hearing, but those, those are possibilities.
So if the second time you pay a five hundred dollar fine, are you allowed to continue vending once you pay the fine?
Brian might be able to speak to this, 'cause I do know in the ordinance, we have a provision that's related to the vendor permits. I'm just not well-versed in it.
Chairman, Commissioners, appreciate the time. Brian Kellenberger, Director of Beach Operations, twenty-two sixty I, acknowledgment. All vendors shall be signing acknowledgment that he or she has read this section, understands the terms. In addition to this penalties, in section twenty-two sixty-two, the vendor permit may be revoked for violation of this article. It just does not detail what is the process for permit revocation. Uh, so I would recommend that under a resolution that establishes fines, that there be a process, uh, outlined as to how a permit would be revoked and then reinstated.
There's always a risk that, uh, somebody that's had multiple violations, and I think you indicated to whether they were convicted or not. But we know sometimes that could take all the way to the end of the season and beyond.
Yes, sir.
And so we're gonna have to be looking at it prior to the next season. Um, I'm just trying to look for a, some mechanism that we can be used for those violators that are routinely doing this, 'cause I kinda look at it, a hundred dollar fine, that's two steps in a day. They can pay that, no problem.
That is some, uh, so if you'd like to direct my office to look at this and bring back some language, we can certainly do that, if you wanted to flush out the hearing option, which would be probably a little bit more expedient than waiting for the conviction.
Well, obviously, I can't make a motion, but I'll ask the board to consider that we direct legal to move forward with some mechanism beyond just what is present here.
You need a motion, sir. I will make it.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I have, uh, uh, one on page sixteen.
Sure.
Uh, middle of the page, R. Uh, I would like to direct the, uh, Sid's office to look into, uh, what we can do about this, the, uh, driving on the beach in areas where you have a thousand.
Yes, sir.
feet. Uh, I, uh, I've seen people cross other beaches that were doing that.
Okay.
Uh, so I, I'd just like to, like you to flesh that out a little bit.
Okay. So we could explore this and see if this provision's, uh, necessary or if we need some clarification language.
Right, right.
Okay. We can certainly do that.
Is there any other questions, comments concerning what we have been presenting so far?
Not so far.
Yeah, I know. All right, seeing none from the board, at this time, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Um, due to the time, I'm not sure how many people out there, it's quite a few people, would want to speak to the vendor side of it right now. That's where we're at on the vendors, not the rest of it. So you'll have three minutes, unless the board, due to the time constraints, want to reduce that to maybe two.
How many people signed up? I don't think we've had anyone.
See a show of hands on how many people won't speak? Doesn't seem to be that many, obviously.
I'm gonna stay with three if that's what it is. Okay. All right, uh, who wants to speak first? Bob, come on up. When you come up, be sure you identify your name and all that, and spell your name to the clerks, so we'll have a clean record.
Bob, Bob Brook, B-R-O-O-K-E. I, I have a question, uh, Mr. Chairman. Is this include, it, it, can my, can I come on on both the fine structure and on the ordinance, uh, amendment?
Yeah, it's what we've talked about so far, the fine structure and...
Okay, thank you. All right, just one question I had on the, on the, one of the changes to the ordinance on page nineteen, number eight, where it states, "No vending shall occur on beaches seaward of the erosion control line established pursuant to chapter one sixty-one Florida statutes."
Yes, sir.
I didn't know we had an erosion control line, except at the west end of the county.
That is the only place.
It's, it's the mean-high water line is, is the delineation between state property and non-state property, as I understand it. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I, I talked to, uh, the former board attorney about a number of things in the ordinance that refer to activities on state land and whether or not the county can pass ordinances that affect the state land, and he told me, in fact, he can't. They just happened to be rife through this ordinance, or at least the ordinance, two years ago or three years ago, when I asked him about it. So I'm not sure you can even make this statement and hear about s- anything seaward, the mean, the mean-high water line or the erosion control line is, and he can't, the county having any ordinance or authority to, in, in act an ordinance relative to that area of the beach. Uh, one, that's just one observation. Um, and then on the, moving to the, uh, the fine, the fine schedule, uh, on beach vendors, I just had a question, uh, first of all, about the rationale for setting the, the permit amount for, uh, beach vending activities at seven hundred and fifty dollars. Um, can anybody explain that to me? I just, as an analogy before I, uh, you know, if, if somebody leases a piece of property, for example, in the shopping center, they very frequently charge a portion of the gross profits or the net profits as part of the leasing costs. Uh, does anybody know how much the vendors make on the beaches out here on average, or any particular vendors make? And has that been considered? And then, I guess the second question is, why only fifty dollars for each additional site? They still make the same amount, they, you know, sometimes they may be making more money on the sites after they've signed up for their first one than on their earlier ones. I just, I don't understand what the fine structure, what the basis for the fine structure, the rationale behind it is. Uh, I'd appreciate an explanation on that if, uh, if someone could give that to me. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bob. Counsel?
Do you want me to address some, Mr. Brooks?
Please.
Okay. First, on, um, going back to section D eight, um, so just to clarify, for Mr. Brook, I, I happen to know the general area where Mr. Brook lives. So this change to this provision would not impact, um, Mr. Brook or his neighbor's ability to control vending on property that they own, which they do, in fact, own the beach to the mean-high water line. So they would still have the ability to control vending on their property that they own. This change is really just to address a situation, um, that I believe occurred as a result of a, just a, you know, not tightening up the language when this la- was first adopted. Um, it's a situation where we have public beaches and people who have no ownership interest whatsoever in those beaches, who happen to own to usually the dune line, not to the mean-high water line, have the ability to control vending on those public beaches. So it's really just to address that situation. It was my understanding, this D eight language originally got put in to, um, address concerns of beachfront property owners who've had an erosion control line established through beach renourishment, because under Florida statutes, we are required to, um, provide them access to the water in view. So this would continue to protect those, those property owners, but would address the situation where you have people who have no ownership interest whatsoever in the beach controlling what occurs on the beach. That's all. Um, and I think Mr. Brook also had a question about the, all I can say about the fees and fines resolution is we did up the, the fees substantially, I believe, last year. Um, so I, I think that's something we're addressing, trying to address on a routine basis.
All right. Um, just my clarification, Sid.
Yes, sir.
The one dealing with the upland property owners having say-so over beach vending. What we're talking about, if it's a portion of the property, the beach, that is county-owned, county-maintained, whatever, primarily county-owned, and somebody that's uplands of there, and their deed goes to the, either the center of the dune or to the toe of the dune, would have the, the effect of telling us, "No vending."
Correct.
And this here, that's currently the way it is. But what the change is, is to say it doesn't apply basically to public property.
Correct.
Okay.
And I guess the rationale is those property owners never had any ownership or control over that public beach, but they're still able to dictate what occurs on the beach.
Okay. Uh, next, Suzanne, come on.
I think what y'all passed, what you, your, what you suggested that you got a motion for was fantastic. I, I have, um...
Ms. Harris.
And I don't say nice things very often. Suzanne Harris, Edgewater Beach Condom and Homes, and, um, I, I hope that y'all will, I hope y'all will do a background check on the vendors, just like you should be doing on the county. I think when a vendor has hit a woman and been arrested, a tourist on the beach, and I have talked to her and the witnesses, I think when he is arrested and he admits in here that it was not provocated, that he, you know, hits her and shoves her to the sand, I promise, that's not what we want on our beaches in Walton County. Now, I think, you know, there should be a time period that that person can't bend on our beaches anymore, but when they are arrested by the sheriff's office for shoving a woman to the ground, unprovocated, I think they should not be vending on our beach. And I think if a person who works for that vendor was a police chief in California who was indicted by the grand jury, I think that when y'all run the background check, you would find out, that's not who we want on our beaches either. And especially since that time, there has been a problem here where a woman that owns a beauty shop was beat up while this man stood outside with his wife. So all I'm saying is, I think we don't want to get the reputation that Panama City had, because Panama City had the reputation. If you wanted drugs or you wanted alcohol, the beach vendors bought it for you. We don't want that reputation, but we sure do not want, and it was all in the newspaper, I'm sure all y'all read it, Northwest Florida Daily News, when this vendor hit this woman. But this woman works at Fort Walton Hospital and was down here on our beach on thirty-eight visiting friends when she was, uh, struck and hit, and this one was arrested. And I think you are right. If you have three violations, and you have them in six, and in seven, and in twenty-one, and on fourteen, that's four violations. And then you also have an arrest for drugs. I really think y'all've got to come to something. I'm not saying they can't ever vend again, but I'm saying if I had an employee that worked for me at Edgewater, and he hit one of my guests and went to jail, he wouldn't be back at Edgewater working, because that's not the reputation I need for my guest. And I don't think we want to open this up to where vendors can do whatever they want to, and nothing happens.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Harris. Um, in regards to her comments, Sid, um, maybe we need to expand what we asked you to do earlier, and let's look at the criminal activity of a vendor. Now, I know they're not our employees.
Right.
And it's up to the, is that, to the clerk, please?
I have to sit in the seat. Well, I don't want to enter in the record. I just want to talk.
Oh, okay. But anyway, maybe we need to look a little bit further down the road on that, okay?
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, and, well, just leave them later.
May I just ask?
I don't know what they are.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
A lot of times, it's the first person that they see on our beaches. It would be the vendors. So that's the reputation that we're giving out. I, I, I agree with, with Chairman.
And something we can certainly look into, but...
Because we do vet, vet them for permits, don't we? I don't know if I'm saying that correctly, but we go through, they go through, uh, our TDC for the permitting process, correct?
Did you go through the TDC?
Okay.
Now, that's where maybe we should have some criteria. No, we can't, but maybe we should have some criteria for vendors.
Okay. All right, we'll put that on the list, Mr. Sid. All right, next, we want to speak concerning the vendor issues that we've talked about so far. Anybody else come forward, ma'am? Sir, you'll be next, right after her.
I know that it's, uh, short for time. My name is Melissa Ward with Delap and Chipman. I'm here on behalf of Sea Haunts, and, uh, I do have just about three or four slides, if I could just put, they're just pictures to give an idea of what their concerns are. Would that be all right?
Go ahead.
Okay.
You've got two minutes forty-four seconds.
Well, I'll go ahead and talk about it, and maybe you can help me set that up. Specifically, Sea Haunts has, for the, for the last three years solid, had the ability to say, "We would prefer not to have vendors along our beach." And, um, and that beach is a public beach, um, but that's the way the ordinance was written, "Public beach, you have to have permission of the adjacent owners," so on and so forth. They had incidences of vendors who removed their owner's belongings in order to put more chairs down the beach. They had a, a vendor who, um, hit a, hit a child as they were backing out, because there's no parking down Spooky Lane, that's, you know, and you're all familiar with Spooky Lane. Um, they've had vendors who have left materials on the beach and then refused to come get them. They've talked to vendors and tried to get them to play along with the rules and do what they're supposed to do, and they've had a great deal of difficulty. So what they're asking for, first, they would like for the language to stay the way it is. And I understand that the statute gives clear definition, so if you cannot leave it the way it is, they'd like to suggest looking at the ordinance one more time and considering an option for people that are on the east end, that are not a part of that erosion control line, that gives them something, somebody to petition to say, "We prefer that if you're gonna do it, do it at that end of the beach." Right now, there's not a process in this ordinance that explains that you, as a homeowner, even though you're next to a public beach, have some kind of ability to say what we want. The property in the beaches, this particular beach, is a thousand feet, thousand-plus feet along the Gulf of Mexico. They only have three hundred and fifty feet of that. And if the vendor wants to be next to the condo, next to them, they're gonna take up the length of the beach. The language in the, in the ordinance specifically says they can have fifty percent of the front of the beach. At a thousand feet, that's five hundred, that's more than what they, the Sea Haunts have available to them. So they're asking not that you arbitrarily say you can't have these things or you can't have them, they're asking to consider a way for a homeowner or a condo or anybody who's next to a beach, that's a public beach, and ask, "Can we please make the zone over here? We would rather not have the zone, but if you're gonna do it, can you limit to where it is?" They would prefer that your, um, vendors be kept at the regional accesses where there's parking available, where there's things that make it easier for them to come and go without injuring children. Um, Spooky Lane is entirely too narrow, no parking available or anything. It's a neighborhood access that doesn't, you have room for the people that come down there, um, to park in the road, unload, unload, and so forth, without them being extremely careful. And that's my time, and the pictures are not. What I was gonna show you is the area along the beach. The e, the area of the emerald, the, um, erosion control line is seven and a half miles, seven and a half. That means that this ordinance, if it gets adopted the way it is, and I'm specifically talking about the language with the erosion control line, leaves seventeen and a half mile along the Gulf of Mexico that has no regulation and no way to govern it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jason, I can't see.
I can give it to her, so you can have the picture.
Yes, sir.
Give him to Karen if you want.
Come on forward. Thank you.
Hi, Josh Newton. Uh, first thing I wanted to kinda get to...
Excuse me, would you spell your last name, please?
Newton, N-E-W-T-O-N, sorry. Um, was, I'm not entirely sure we answered Mr. Brook's question regarding the increase to seven hundred and fifty dollars, um, myself as a business owner and just a, and then, um, so looking for as to why so steep, uh, an increase from what was five hundred dollars previously, and Okaloosas is five hundred dollars. So just looking for a little bit of more information there, and also, you kinda looking at a gre- uh, an abbreviated, um, scale for people such as photographers and so on and so forth? Well, there's other, um, beach vendor outfits that have fewer chairs or fewer umbrellas than some of these larger groups. Are we gonna draw, where we gonna draw the line at? You know, if I only had, you know, if I was renting out fifty chairs, do I get a cheaper price than somebody that's got two hundred chairs that they can put out? Uh, the second question is issue with the six-by-six-by-six tent, uh, that was enacted last year. Um, as a local and just as a resident, uh, beachgoer, with, um, my biggest issue with that is the enforcement.
Uh, sir, I don't think we even discussed...
We haven't gotten to that.
We haven't got to that. If you'll stick just to the vendor issues, then we're gonna be talking about the tent size here in a little bit.
Okay. Well, that, that in itself is also translates to a vendor issue, but I can wait if that's what you want to do.
Please, thank you. Uh, anyone else? Okay, I'll take him and then you're, you're next.
It's Philip Poundstone, P-O-U-N-D-S-T-O-N-E. Appreciate all of your time and everything you do for our county. I'm an owner of a small business here in Walton County that does beach vending. I'm also the president and a member of the board, and we formed the South Walton Beach Services Association that we've talked about off and on for the past year. Uh, to answer Ms. Harris' comment a minute ago, I think it is extremely important that we have good people on the beach. Um, I'm a college graduate. I'm a family man. I think the 99% of us, um, live to a higher standard, and that's not who we are with people that do felonies. So I just want you guys not to get the picture that's who we are. But to hold ourselves to a higher standard, I would like, uh, the commissioners to look to see if there's a way that you had to be a member of our association in order to vend on public beaches. Uh, that is not a way to exclude anybody, but that's a way that I, myself and my business, along with other people that are a part of the association, have a much higher standard. So what we think is appropriate on our Walton County beaches, obviously our clientele that we serve expects a much higher expectation. So we go above and beyond the county rules and we would ask that you guys look into that, that we can police ourselves even more. Um, moving on to the directive about storage at the toe of the dune, uh, there are several reasons that I would advise you guys to leave it as is, if you would please consider that. It's extremely dangerous with how narrow and steep the boardwalks is, with how heavy it is, carrying spiky umbrellas up and down every time. Um, it was not passed by the beach management committee. It's gonna add a lot more parking and a lot more traffic just because we're gonna have to have more individuals to serve it. And one extremely important thing I want you guys to think about, as much as I wish that I could create demand for more people to want beach chairs, we don't create any of that demand whatsoever. It is our beaches, it is the TDC, we have a beautiful place that people wanna come vacation. They don't come because they wanna see a pool and watercolor. They wanna come to the beach and they wanna be served on the beach, and that's why we exist and that's how we get to provide for our family. Um, so I don't want it in the general public or you guys to think that it's us and we're the monsters that create this. Um, again, to talk about the association, we feel like we're doing a lot to help this. And the biggest thing is with storage at the toe of the dune, if we remove that, it could really affect my job. It could affect, this past summer, we had 85 employees. Um, we would not be able to do that. And then finally, on the issue of, uh, that you guys talked about earlier with, if you hit a certain threshold with the amount of tickets that you get, you could lose your license to do business. I just would want you guys to think about that. None of us want to get a $500 ticket, I can assure you. But that's like saying a restaurant, if a restaurant got a certain amount of tickets wrong, a certain amount of orders wrong, if they hit that 10th order wrong, they're out of business. Um, it's just the business that we're in and nobody wants to get a ticket. I, if we need to raise the fines, we can do that. We can come up with other creative ways, but I can assure you that none of us, there are very few people that would say it's a costly doing business, certainly not me. So, thank you for your consideration.
Yes, sir. Put that thing over here where I can see it, please. Now, just lift it over there.
Uh, Mansel White, M-A-U-N-S-L, White. I'm a resident of Seagrove Beach, and I'm here to talk about the revision of the clause in the D8 about the Upland property owners' influence on the activities on the beach. Um, I would certainly hope that you would reconsider changing that language. Uh, I know that in my subdivision, the Sea Holland subdivision, the beach was dedicated as part of the dedication in this, when the subdivision was platted. And as y'all remember, those of you commissioners who were here last year when you had an attorney that came to talk about the legal implications of dedication, one of the things he emphasized was that dedication does not transfer title. Okay, when that subdivision was developed in 1939 or whenever it was, that, that beach was dedicated to the public, meaning the people in the subdivision was the intent. It wasn't written that way, but that was the way, that was the original intent. If you take this right of those Upland property owners to influence whether or not the, the beach vendors use the beach like it's a public beach, uh, I can tell you that there's a good likelihood that the people in that subdivision are gonna try to reassert their rights to that beach, which is really, the title has never been transferred, and the county never accepted that. They only accepted the streets in that subdivision. If you go back and look, and if the county attorney will go back and look at that.
We have numerous beach accesses located in that subdivision, right, Brian?
Well, the beach accesses are, were dedicated as accesses, but I'm talking about the beach as a park. And that does not convey ownership to the county. That's what the, the attorney that you had come and make, uh, comments to the commission last year emphasized that. So you could wind up with a, yet another serious, uh, issue of litigation here if, if that, uh, clause is taken out of the, out of the ordinance. Uh, you know, last year, I kept the, the, uh, vendors away and from in front of my house just so that my neighbors and the visitors in the neighborhood would have a place to go. The vendors go down there at 6:30 and they pepper the beach. There's no place to go. People have to walk hundreds of yards to find a place if they have their own chairs and umbrellas. And I kept the beach in front of my house clear for the people to have their own setups. And it worked fine. And the, the vendors stayed by the public accesses all last summer, and it worked like a champ. So there's really no reason why that, that, that wording should be taken out of that law unless it's just a sob to the vendors. And I would certainly hope that you would reconsider changing that. It's been, it, that language has been in here for a long time, and it was put in there for good reason, uh, so that in case we ever did need to do the renourishment in that area, which has never been done, uh, that those people would not fight it for the easements and for the access to do the, the restoration. So please reconsider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. White. Anyone else? Okay, we've got about 25 minutes, so we ain't even come close to getting through this thing. Come up forward, ma'am. You're next, back there on the back row.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Heather Cleveland, spelled just like the city. I'm the director of event management for Sandestin Golf and Beach Resort. Thank you so much for your time today. Uh, I spoke at the last hearing that we had about, uh, public and private beach events, obviously representing Sandestin Golf and Beach Resort, a lot of tourism dollars here for Walton County. I provided some information to you about our previous event permits that we had on the beach. We filed those through the planning and development office here with Walton County. We've successfully been able to do that for the past three years. We paid a one-time annual permit fee. We're simply asking that the board consider something very similar to that. We certainly understand fee structures, things like that need to change, need to become current. There needs to be a very good policy and procedure for those of us resort entities that run our own catering on our own private beaches. Uh, so certainly we are just asking that we be considerate of that. I provided some information to you. Several of our groups that come to Sandestin Golf and Beach Resort have been coming for 30-plus years. Beach events are a very important part of their business. Uh, and I provided five testimonials to each of you via email from three, five of our most important clients that have indicated if they cannot host their beach event or if they have very hefty fines to now do so after coming for 30 years and doing so, they will no longer do business in Walton County. And I'm sure my friends with the TDC and all of us that are here and making a living for ourselves and our families take that very seriously. Most of those groups translate into million dollars of tourism revenue here in the county.
And Ms. Cleveland, I don't mean to cut you off, but we haven't gone to that section yet. And just so you know, the, um, current draft we have of the fee resolution still includes the calendar of events and developments with commercial entitlements.
So it will not be on a sliding scale based on the guest count because that was the original?
As it's currently drafted, no ma'am.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Still have the calendar of events, but we're still looking at the, um, amounts for the fee for the calendar of events. That's something the board will consider later.
Okay, very good. Should, are you gonna talk about that today?
Hopefully, if we have time.
If we get, to, we may end up having to move this to another date because.
Very good, 'cause I, I see my friends from across the street are here as well. I'm sure they have the same questions and concerns. Very good. Thank you.
Uh, yes, yes, ma'am.
Um, hello, my name's Lynn Nesmith, N-E-S-M-I-T-H. Um, I wanted to touch on the enforcements and penalties and those kinds of things, and also sort of, um, commend Suzanne Harris for what she said. I had a dealing with a vendor and I wasn't attacked, but it was kind of a bad situation. Um, I don't know where these penalties come, but I've heard there was warnings, one, two, three. I called repeatedly, day after day, for three days about leftover firewood, canisters of oil, toxic chemicals within three feet of a coastal, rare coastal dune lake. I used to serve on the coastal dune lake advisory board, so I take the dune lakes very seriously. Um, I had not, no response. I emailed. They're on my favorites. Brian and Jeff and everybody at the TDC. Finally, I flagged down a truck, TDC code enforcement, a really nice gentleman, and he and I, he waited with me until they called the actual vendor, and the vendor finally came down after three days of warnings. So that was, you know, they said they can't, there's no enforcement, there's no penalty. Finally, after these toxic chemicals sitting for three days within a few feet of the lake, a vendor did come down. He was very upset. He was very mad. And his excuse for the toxic chemicals sitting by the lake was that he was not driving a company truck. He was driving his own car, and there was no way he was gonna put that gasoline and those chemicals in his car. But he had no problem letting them sit by a dune lake for three days. Only because the code enforcement gentleman was there did the vendor come down and he took the stuff away. But there's no way he would've if we hadn't been sitting there. He called the boss, the boss called this person, and it's just no repercussions whatsoever to that vendor. And if that's the way you value our coastal dune lakes and a vendor's private car is more important than one of our rare endangered lakes, there's a problem with the whole vendor situation in Walton County.
Thank you, ma'am.
Brian, would, would you care to respond to that?
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Appreciate the opportunity. We did respond to the complaints. Uh, a few things were left out of that, uh, narrative there is that the evening that, or the morning that they were found was after a large storm. Uh, we did take care of it. The vendor did receive a ticket for that, uh, noncompliant behavior. And, uh, so while it is important that the coastal dune lakes be protected, uh, it was, um, charcoal starter in a bucket next to the boardwalk.
Anybody else? All right, is anyone else out there wanna speak to this issue at this time? Yes, sir, come forward.
Benjamin Tipton, T-I-P-T-O-N. I'm a beach vendor here. I've been working, working the beach for a long time, and it's a privilege and a blessing to be out here on the beach. I own a small business here, and, um, I'm seeing a lot of vendors, you're getting a handful of these vendors that these people are talking about who don't follow the rules and repetitively, you know, I work very hard to follow the rules and stay within the ordinances and the guidelines. And, um, I think if you wanna see a change here, you might wanna think about moving forward with the, um, after a certain number of tickets, maybe a suspension of beach vending for a while or something, if you really wanna see a change here, you know, set the line there. And I also wanna talk about the storage at the toe of the dune and just bounce off of what Mr. Poundstone said. Um, you're gonna get a lot of traffic if you, uh, don't let beach vendors store at the toe of the public beach access. This is now carrying chairs and equipment up and down to already very busy boardwalks, and that's a danger to families who are leaving the beach, you know, every day. And, um, that's gonna flow over into the parking lots. They're gonna be, we're working well into the night now, hours, adding a lot more labor than you already have, and lots of traffic and action there. And, um, just wanna say, you know, as, it's, uh, you see some of the, you know, the beaches, the private beaches with box after box after box and boardwalk and trash receptacles. I just don't see the issue with where a chair that's three feet wide, if that, you know, in a nice neat stack at a private, uh, public beach access, how that is any more worse for the turtles or, or the public, anybody, than just the boxes and boxes and boardwalks or a trash receptacle anywhere else. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Bowman?
Quay Bowman, B-O-W-N-A-M. I'm wondering, is there currently a limit to the amount of beach vendors that are allowed?
Is there what?
Currently a limit to the amount of beach vendors that are allowed?
No, ma'am.
There's not? Okay, well, there needs to be one because, uh, we can't just have, like, nothing but chairs on the beach. And as far as I'm concerned, there shouldn't be anything stored at the toe of a dune. Thank you.
All right. Come on.
Hey, good evening. John Welborn with Livwell 38. It's W-E-L-L-B-O-R-N. Hope everybody's doing well tonight. Thank you, guys, for all you do for the, for the county. Hey, just a quick thing I wanted to let you know. I'm the vice president of the Beaches of South Walton Vending Association. We did an informal survey this summer, over the Fourth of July weekend. We surveyed about 5,000 people. This was not a association-coordinated effort. This was something that our company did. Surveyed, informally surveyed about 5,000 tourists. Um, virtually 100% said that they thought the beach vendors added value to their, uh, stay and that they'd be more likely to return to the, to the South Walton area because of the convenience offered by the, by the beach vendors. So that's something we'll be doing on a larger scale and more formal this summer, but just wanted to speak up for the vendors tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Okay, we have 15 minutes. I see, I think about it, and I see you two. And we're not gonna be able to get everybody in, I tell you that, 'cause we're gonna cut it off at five minutes till, 'cause we need to take a short break before we come back in for our regular board meeting. So we'll go ahead and take the rest of the public comment up until five till, and then a decision will be made at that time to extend this to another date in the future. I don't know who had their hand up first, but you come on.
Is this, is this the appropriate time to talk about the vendor fee adjustment?
Yes, it is.
Yes, sir. We were discussing vendors.
All right, there was another hand over here somewhere, thought, there's a lady outside at the door. All right, come on up, sir.
My name is Chuck Lawson, L-A-W-S-O-N. I am a, um, full-time professional musician here. And I just wanted to make sure that we were, uh, clear on the, uh, the beach vendors that we're referring to on, on the adjustment of the fee. I'm someone that goes to the beach for 30 minutes, six, eight times a year. And the $750 fee is a little actually ridiculous. It's, it's not practical for me. And, uh, I just wanted to make sure that people like myself, musicians that go and do weddings on the beach or officiants, and you also mentioned florists and photographers, we're not down there every day, all day with that kind of income justified. So I just wanna make sure that that was clarified. Thank you all very much. Merry Christmas.
That's exactly the type of example of the miscellaneous operations.
And if I'm not mistaken, if you're doing a wedding, you would be under the wedding vendor's permit, is that right?
Yes, sir. Right, Brian.
You would be under a wedding vendor's permit if you're doing a wedding, if you're playing at a wedding. Uh, now, if they contacted you separately, if it's, if the bride has a permit to have, somebody has to have a permit to have a wedding on the beach. So you would, if you're doing a wedding, you would fall under that permit, if I'm not mistaken, right?
If it's through another vendor.
Yeah.
If it's through another vendor, but, and I'll just bring this up too, that about 75% of the time, there aren't wedding planners.
Right.
I get to be that, like, showing up and knowing what I'm doing, so.
So this would be a circumstance where, um,
Yes.
if the board adopted a lower fee, you would qualify for that?
Yes, that's correct, 'cause many times there isn't a wedding vendor to go under. The, the brides have to get a permit, but as I understand it, I'm supposed to get another permit for myself, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that that was clarified, what we were discussing, 'cause it, you know, the, the fees that I charge are not anywhere near what I would need them to be for the $750, so thank you. Merry Christmas.
There was another hand up here. Ma'am, come forward.
Thank you. I'm Claire Kuhn, K-U-H-N. Um, I got in late, so I hope I'm not gonna speak out of turn, but, um, I do South Walton Turtle Walk, and I have to commend, there's many great vendors, very sweet, and they've helped us out many times. But as far as the storage at the toe of the dune, I just hope that y'all will remember the sea turtles. They like to nest up at that area, and a lot of times they've gotten tangled up and had chairs to fall on them and to disturb them, and they've left and haven't nested. And, um, so I, I just want you to remember the, the sea turtles and their nesting and things being stored at the, at the toe of the dune. Please remember them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can I close public comment?
I, I have a comment.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Brian, could you come up for a minute? Yes, sir. Uh, in your opinion, is, is the vending better this, was the vending better this past summer?
Yes, sir. We've noticed a steadily increase over the three or four years I've been here that the vending industry has listened, uh, to our requests uh, to, uh, you know, self-regulate, so to speak, on the beach. They've been very active in, uh, the, um, uh, code revision processes. They've been very active in the code revision processes. Our Beach Management Committee, we have a seat for a beach vendor on that committee, very well-informed and offers very productive input. So all in all, yes, sir, I think the vending has gotten better. The problems we suffer from are congestion. That's what creates the problems we have on the beach. So, you know, the answer is either more beach or, or, you know, very defined regulations. And that's what we've been doing over the last three years. We recognize there was issues with the code, there were some holes in it, there were some conflicts, and we spent these last three years getting those in line. As we do that, we realize that writing code is not the easiest task to do and, but we're getting there. So yes, sir, answer your question, yes it is.
Any other questions, Commissioner Nipper?
I have another question, yes. Not for you Brian. Well, I could, it could be for you.
Let me ask just one more, Brian. Is it a, do you find that, is there a certain group of vendors that just refuse to obey the rules or is it, are most of the rules mistakes by young kids or is there a group that just, price to doing business, I don't care?
We have some of both. By and far, the specifics place type vendors, which are associated with private property resort communities and such, intend to be the larger companies. We don't have a whole lot of trouble out of them. Occasionally there will be some leave no trace violations. Typically those are attributed to somebody pulling product off of a stack or what we call sniping during the evening. Sometimes it is, you know, a failure of one of their employees. Delivery vendors, because of the battle for turf on public beach, tends to be a section of that industry that we have more problems out of. As the vendor is a smaller vendor and has less ability to manage and regulate their workforce, we tend to see the issues of leave no trace sets. Towards the end of the season, sometimes it appears to us, and this is just a perception by myself, that, you know, the margins that have been made can justify a lax in responsibility. In other words, a $500 fine may not impact the bottom line as much as it would have in the first of the year.
Okay, Commissioner Nipper?
In the one year I've been here, we've gone through tremendous strides. I can see us going to some type of sliding scale and there was a young lady last year who talked about on the internet, for example, if you had 50 chairs, you had to pay this much more, 100 chairs you pay this much more, because I feel the 750, like Bob Brooks is talking about, that really doesn't impact the bigger operators, but it really impacts the small operators. And I think if we put it on some type of sliding scale on the internet through permitting, I think that would be a possibility of that scale being justified. So that's just my suggestion.
Commissioner Commander, do you have any comments?
Well, I guess I have a question to yours. So let's say I'm a small company right now and all I have is 50 chairs, but I can grow. Is my fee, for example, going to be based on, that's all I'm going to be allowed to put on the beach is 50 chairs? Or?
Or? I'm just, it's something we need to think about, this maybe a sliding scale for the larger vendors to be, or the smaller vendors to be.
And I guess I do have a question. Brian?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we seeing substantial increases in vendors? I mean, how many vendors do we have now that, say we, say 10 years ago, how many vendors?
Yes, ma'am, we, we seen a steady increase in vendors. This year we had 208 different vendor permits. A lot of those were what we call subsequent place, specific place permits. There was 128 individual vendors. Over last year, it was probably about a 30% increase.
Well, I don't, I don't see how we can continue to sustain that. If we, there's a 20% increase in 2018 that there was in 2017 and another 20% in 2019 and 2020. I mean, how can we possibly sustain all that?
I would assume that the, you know, supply and demand market would, would regulate itself. In other words, as, as the more product gets on the beach, the price comes down. I think we've seen a pretty substantial decrease in unit price of a chair and umbrella. And so eventually it will get to be where it's not worth the effort for people that want to get into the industry. And some people will probably opt out of it as the profit margins decrease and, you know, those are all business decisions, but, you know, it's certainly something to consider. It doesn't need to be a moratorium. We did that on charter fishing on Grayton Beach so that we wouldn't have unlimited number of boats trying to launch from Grayton.
All right, Commissioner, thank you. Ms. Sid, I ask you to go over these individually and we'll look at it as whether we take, unless you've got something else you want to say.
I just think that as much time as, as little time as we have left, we need to set up another meeting and finish this because we've got five minutes and I've got to go to the bathroom.
Don't get in my way.
All right, well, clarify something for me, Mr. Anderson. Are you wanting to just put everything, move to another date certain to consider any votes on what we've discussed so far?
I do, because I have some questions for Sid that I'd like to sit down and talk to her about. There's some people that had some good points out here that, that I don't, and there's probably some people out here that felt like they haven't had a chance to say what they want to say. I would prefer we do it on a day where we don't have a board meeting.
Well, that's what I was going to offer, that we try and find a date, that we can just set this aside for a hearing instead of trying to jam it in within an hour of our scheduled meeting. So would that work for you, Ms. Sid?
Well, hopefully it'll work for Heather. But I'll make sure that Heather's up to speed.
Okay, then.
What about January the 8th? It's a Monday. We have a board meeting on the 9th unless we want to start at 2:00.
No, I'm pretty much in line with Tony as far as having this on a separate day where it doesn't conflict with any other boards. So, how's it look on January the 10th? On the what? 3rd?
We can't do the 8th?
Oh, I can do the 8th, 9th, 10th and 10th, so. As I look for everybody else.
We have a 9 meeting on the 9th.
Yeah, I know. So I want to kind of stay away from a board day, 8th or the 10th?
8th.
8th?
Is that okay with you, Johnny?
Okay. All right, well then, we're going.
What time?
10 o'clock.
Oh my God.
Let's don't do it on that night.
Oh, that might be a bad day. All right, hang on a minute, please.
And what time? 10 a.m.?
10, 10 on the 8th.
All right, yeah. If Alabama's still in it, I'll.
What time does the game start? Can we?
10 o'clock on the 8th.
All right. 10 o'clock on the 8th, does that work for everybody?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll go ahead and.
We need a motion?
Yeah, the recess to January the 8th at 10 a.m. at the South Annex. Has I got a motion for that?
Yes, sir, I make the motion.
Second. Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. We stand adjourned at your board meeting.